Welcome to the June 2018 Village Buchanan Board Meeting. In case of emergency, please use the exit to my left to your right, or do not use the elevator, use the stairway. And if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Before we get the meeting started, I'd just like to say something about this Saturday, June 16th. The village is having a birthday party. It's our 90th birthday. And at 11:30, there will be a parade. The parade lineup will be at the Village Hall. The parade will go up Ketchum Avenue, take a left onto Tate Avenue, in front of the Village Hall, around the Village Circle, down Westchester Avenue, and to the Pavilion. That's where we will end, and that's where our picnic will be. So, for those that are coming to the picnic, we look forward to seeing you. For those that would like to come to the parade, the best viewing place would probably be the Village Hall lawn, or out at the Circle. We have all kinds of events planned, and it's going to be a very fun day. The picnic is hot dogs, hamburgers, sausage and peppers, baked beans, salads. You won't go home hungry. So, it'll be a great day. Right now, we have over 600 people coming, so it's gonna be a fun day, and it's gonna be sunny, so it's gonna be all good. So, I just wanted to mention that right up front. I hope to see everyone there.
Can I have just one question?
Sure, absolutely.
Is Cheech gonna be in the dunking booth?
Well...
We got rid of it.
We got rid of the dunking booth.
I was looking forward to that.
So was I.
Well, we could arrange it at one meeting that one night.
And I also had a red, white, and blue, two-piece bathing suit to wear.
Oh, well, let's see if we can still get the dunking...
You can still wear that.
Oh, no, can't do that.
Was it a Speedo?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Oh, come on, skin tight.
Okay. Maybe it was a good, maybe it was a good idea getting rid of the dunking booth.
Yeah, they would wanna dunk me after seeing me in that, trust me.
You guys are on YouTube.
Oh, you know what else I forgot? Yes. On Tuesday, June 19th, is the official birthday of the Village of Buchanan. We are going to have an open house here at Village Hall, and it will be from 12 to 8. The historical room will be open. We will be serving cake and coffee, so, you know, anyone who hasn't seen the historical room, please stop by. Moving on to the meeting. Approval of minutes, March 27, 2018 workshop meeting. Any comments, questions, corrections?
I have none.
Nothing for me.
No corrections?
Nothing.
Okay, on a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Village Board Public Hearing on 2018-2019 Budget, April 10th. Any questions, corrections?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the floor, agenda items only. Okay, no comments. Under Old Business, for A, Public Hearing on a Proposed Local Law Amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan Establishing a Utility Tax on Utility Services. So, we are on a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have discussed this several times. Are there any other comments from the Board? Any comments from the floor? Then, on a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. One dissent.
Okay, one, oh, to close the public hearing?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I've got confused.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Okay, okay, now, we are gonna do the resolution authorizing a local law amending Chapter 181 Establishing a Tax on Utility Services by the Village of Buchanan.
Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said Village Board at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties in a proposed local law pertaining to the amendment of Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan Establishing a Tax on Utility Services, and whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly held at regularly scheduled meetings of the Village Board on May 1st and June 14th at 7:30 PM at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan after due deliberation find it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law, now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts said local law number 1-2018 amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan by adding Article 4 Establishing a Tax on Utility Services in the Village of Buchanan, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, and be it further resolved that the Village Clerk be and he hereby is directed to enter sent local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan and give, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York.
Okay, thank you. On a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm voting on that also. Opposed?
One, me.
All right, thank you. All right, under New Business, it's a public hearing on a proposed local law amending Chapter 211 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan, so we'll open up the public hearing on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is something we have been working on for quite a while. There was a lot of back and forth, but I believe we've finally come to some type of a resolution after, we wanted to make sure we got this right. So, are there any comments from the Board on this?
I would like to make a couple of comments. I, I can't even think how far back we started discussing this, and it was a difficult issue, so it kept getting put aside when things came up like budgets and nuclear power plants closing, and we came back to it, we've come back to it on and off for years now, but I do think that it was necessary for the Board to do something here. We did send out a survey to the residents, and it was clear from that, there was a mixed opinion in the public, but the number of people who wanted to see some better control of this type of vehicle parking far outweighed the number of people that said, "We don't wanna be told at all what we can do with our property." And then, and then the Village Board, of course, we have to use our judgment as well on this. There were a fair number of people that wanted restrictions on trailers and commercial vehicles. Many people expressed the interest in not having these vehicles visible in front, so, you know, so we've had to come up with something that's, we can't completely step on everybody's toes, but we're trying to improve the appearance of the village, and, and it's, like many other things, it's a quality of life issue here in the village. So, I, I think it was, it's, it's a good thing to see the Board getting close to approving this.
And a lot of this really was, a lot of these things were already in the code, so we kind of updated some things and tweaked some things, but the basis was there.
Yes, that's true. Good point.
I think, you know, like you say, we've wrestled with this issue for some time, and I think the compromises that we've come up with, compromises that we've come up with are one in which that, you know, not everyone's gonna be happy with everything, but I think the character of the village and the idea that we, you know, as a homeowner, you have that opportunity to purchase and have different vehicles in your, in your garage and in your lawn, I mean, in your driveway, is a, is a good compromise, and I would hope that, you know, as we move forward with this, people will be, you know, mindful of it and mindful of their neighbors and concerns with the types of vehicles that they bring in. And then always, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis somewhat based on what we find in parked in driveways, yeah.
Going forward.
Yep.
Anyone else from the Board have any comments? Any comments from the floor on this item?
I, I just wanna read one thing here on Part C that everybody should be aware of. Says, "All parked or stored recreational vehicles and trailers must have a permit and sticker issued by the village indicating that said recreational vehicle and/or trailer is owned by the owner of the property or owned by a legal renter of the property where said recreational vehicle or trailer is stored or parked."
Right, that's a good point to make. That's one of the new aspects of this will be that people cannot rent out, or allow, as a friend, people that do not live there to park their vehicles on the property. There are other surrounding communities that are, that are pretty strict on this, and so people are saying, "Hey, they don't bother you in Buchanan, could we park our whatever on, in your driveway?" So, you know, you will now have, and, and we will be sending out a letter explaining these changes and those terms.
Procedure.
The procedures, but you will just have to get a sticker to put on your vehicle to, to, to prove that it is registered to a person that owns or rents at that property, resides at that property.
Okay. Any comments from the floor?
Good question.
Okay, on a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Rich, could you please read the resolution authorizing the local law?
Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said Village Board at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties in a proposed local law amending Chapter 211-19 entitled "Accessory Structures and Uses" to the Code of the Village of Buchanan, and whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village Board on June 5th, 2000, or June 14th, 2018, at the Municipal Build, Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan after due deliberation find it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law, now be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts said local law number 2-2018 amending Chapter 211-19 entitled "Excessory Structures and Uses" of the Code of the Village of Buchanan, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, and be it further resolved that the Village be and he, Village Clerk be and he hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York.
All right, thank you. Okay, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dwayne, Resolution C and D, please.
Okay. Whereas the village employs individuals on a seasonal basis during the summer for its recreational activities, and whereas the recreation supervisor has recommended summer personnel, now, it, now be it therefore resolved that the individuals on the annexed list hereby are appointed as pool staff for 2018 summer season at the salaries and rates set forth next to their names. Be it further resolved that the village administrator, administrator be and hereby is authorized to place the aforementioned individuals on the village payroll for the summer season and to be paid the salaries as set forth herein. And, it's a lot of folks, but the, the basic scale is $13.50 for Helen, for Sarah, and for Emily, $13.25, Peter, $10.25, $10.75 for Thomas, Joseph, Peter, Katie, Libby, Katie, Colin, and Daniel. So, those are our summer people.
This is something we do every year in June for our summer help for the, the pool. And then, Dwayne will also do the other one for the camp in a minute. So, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Village of Buchanan Resolution Authorizing Employment of Recreational Personnel at the Camp. Whereas the village employs individuals on a seasonal basis during the summer for its recreational activities, whereas the recreation supervisor has recommended summer personnel, now be it therefore resolved that the individuals on the annexed list hereby are appointed as camp staff for 2018 summer season beginning January 25th, 2018 through August 3rd, 2018, at the salaries and rates of pay set forth next to their names.
Do we need to read those names?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot on that again.
The resolution gets put into the records, I don't think we need to read them.
And my understanding, the camp is full?
Right.
For 2018, so we're all, all done. Okay.
That's it?
Yep, that's it. Okay, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dwayne. And Cheech, could you please read E and F?
Yes, ma'am. Village of Buchanan Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Memorandum of Understanding. Whereas the Village of Buchanan issued certain violations in a stop-work order with respect to work performed by a village property owner, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan is desirous of settling the matter, and whereas a memorandum of understanding outlining certain remedial work required of the property owner has been reviewed and is acceptable to the Village Board of Trustees, now it be therefore resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the memorandum of understanding with, excuse me, which is attached hereto.
Thank you. This is, as Cheech said, a memorandum of understanding. This is a situation where some property owners had done some improvements to their outdoor area, and we've come to a resolution with this, and a memorandum of understanding, Any other comments from Board members on this? Okay, we've, we've kind of talked about this several times. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Village of Buchanan Resolution Accepting Proposal for a Licensed Operator at the Village Waste Water Treatment Facility. Whereas it is a requirement of the law that the village have a certified licensed operator at the wastewater treatment facilities at all times, and whereas currently the village needs a certified licensed operator at the sewage treatment facility until an employee can be appropriately trained and certified, and whereas it is the desire of the Village Board to retain the services of a licensed operator to be present on site to perform necessary testing and wastewater-related work, and whereas a proposal has been received from the Allied Pollution Control Incorporated, and whereas said proposal is acceptable to the Village Board, now it be therefore resolved that Allied Pollution Control, Inc. be and hereby is retained to provide a licensed operator at the Village Waste Water Treatment Facility, and be it further resolved that the cost of said services shall not exceed the rates listed in, in the proposal annexed hereto.
Okay, thank you. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Nick, if you could do the last two for us, thank you.
Village of Buchanan Resolution Authorizing the Village of Buchanan to enter into an agreement with the County of Westchester for the purpose of undertaking a community development program. Whereas the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development of the United States is authorized under Title 1 of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title 2 of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended, to make grants to states and other units of general local government to help finance community development programs. And whereas Section 99H of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York grants to any municipal corporation the power, either individually or jointly with one or more municipal corporations, to apply for, accept, and expend funds made available by the federal government, either directly or through the state pursuant to the provisions of any federal law which is not inconsistent with the statutes of, or constitution of this state, in order to administer, conduct, or participate with the federal government in programs relating to the general welfare of the inhabitants of such municipal corporation. And, whereas the Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, Title 2 of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended, and any eligible activities thereunder are not inconsistent with the statutes or constitution of the state, and, whereas a number of municipalities have requested Westchester's participation, and the County of Westchester has determined that it is desirable and in the public interest that it make application for community development block grants and home funds as an urban county, and, whereas participation by the County of Westchester as an urban county in the community development program requires that the Village of Buchanan and the County of Westchester cooperate in undertaking or assisting in undertaking essential community development and housing activities, specifically those authorized by statutes enacted pursuant to Article 18 of, of the New York State Constitution. Whereas this Board deems it to be in the public interest for the Village of Buchanan to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Westchester for the aforesaid purposes, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the Village of Buchanan and be and hereby is authorized to execute a cooperation agreement between the Village of Buchanan and the County of Westchester for the purposes of undertaking a community development program pursuant to the Affordable Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title 2 of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended. Joe get that, or I could read it again?
I'm gonna summarize it real quick.
Yes.
These are the CDBG grants. We, in the past, have applied for those, and I believe the last time was, goes back years, but I believe it was a sidewalk that was installed on Westchester Avenue. So, by passing this resolution, it allows us to be in, in the program. We will decide what's in the best interest of the village, getting involved in this. There's pros and cons, but if something comes along that's in the best interest of the village, then we will take a closer look at that.
And if I may, CDBG is not a music club on the Lower East Side. It stands for Community Development Block Grants.
Did you have anything you would like to add? I'm glad you clarified, because I, I always thought that was, oh, any, no, I know, I, I'm kidding.
No, for the public, I know, I know we know.
Okay, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, I have the last one here.
Yes.
Village of Buchanan Resolution Terminating a Village Employee. Whereas Brian Pascal is employed as a motor equipment operator, abbreviated MEO, at the Village of Buchanan Waste Water Facility, whereas the mayor and Board have decided to determine, to terminate Mr. Pascal's employment as an employee of the Village of Buchanan, now be it therefore resolved that the mayor and the Board of Trustees hereby terminate Mr. Pascal's employment as an employee effective June 5th, 2018.
I will not be commenting on this, this is a personnel issue. So, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Information from Officers and Departments, Justice Court Report, April 2018. The amount is over $3,200. Okay, this report received and filed. Planning Board Minutes, March 2018, received and filed. Fire Inspector's Report, April 2018, received and filed. Attorneys Report. Anything for us this evening, Stephanie?
I have a couple of things, but they would be for executive session.
Okay, yes, we will be going into executive session, thank you. Administrator Report.
I'm just gonna give an update on a couple of the ongoing projects we have here. We have Bennett Avenue Water Pit Project. Currently, all the outside pit work has been done. There's one issue that we're having right now in the plans, and it was a requirement of the Board of Health, was to have a manhole that would go into the ground and be filled with gravel, so in case that there was a leak, it would be funneled into the ground. Problem in that area of the village is that there is a high water table and a lot of groundwater. So, the concern was is that if we put this in, there's gonna be water that would come up in. So, currently, we're back and forth with the Department of Health on a solution for that. It used to go out into a manhole, and we're trying to get them to okay and sign off on that. We have the DEC meter that's required to go in, and we have everything ready to go. So, we figure probably another, once we get approval from the Board of Health to, to make the changes we need to, another two or three weeks, the project will be done.
Oh, good.
Just wanted to give you guys an update on that. Also, on the water meter projects, we have the contracts coming back for signature. Once that's done, they're going to order the meters, which is probably gonna be the longest step to get all the meters here, and then the project will kick off. It should be done, and it has to be done, within 100 days, 120 days of signing the contract, so.
Wow, so...
Four months or so, should be all...
So, what happens to the people? That they're not home, or they can't, are they all installed outside these, right?
No, these are inside the house. What will happen is the contractor will send out a notice to all the houses, and you'll, you'll sign up for an appointment when you're gonna be around, available, and they will come, and they'll put everybody on the list, and they'll probably have to go through it a couple of times, reaching out to people, because there's always gonna be some that are harder to track down than others, but that's gonna be the way the system works. They're gonna, people are gonna sign up for times where they're gonna be available, and they're gonna start scheduling and moving right through.
Wow, that's quick installation.
Yeah, 120 days.
How long does, does it take them to do one, an installation, approximately?
Probably with their employees who do them all the time, probably, I bet you, they shut the water off before the meter, probably, I'm guessing 20 minutes. I mean, when I had the change done at my house where I live, they were in and out of the house in 20 minutes.
Okay. In other words, people would be out water, they'd be without water for about 20 minutes, is that right?
Right, they're gonna shut off the water, make the change, and then turn it right back on.
Right.
And then if the inside, the shut-off isn't working, they'll shut it off at the street, but that would be a little more work, but still not long. It shouldn't take more than a 20 minutes, 30 minutes to knock them out.
Okay.
All right, good.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, I just have a few more things. The pool will open on Saturday, June 16th, and the pool is open to everyone that day, so anyone going to the picnic or anyone, it's kind of like an open house for the pool on Saturday, and I believe it's open until 7 o'clock. And, yeah, the weather's gonna, it's supposed to be really bad this coming week with the humidity, but Saturday's gonna be good. Every year, I do a public service announcement, and I really wish I didn't have to. I've been getting a lot of complaints about people walking dogs, and I, I think, I think the best way to say this is, if you're walking your dog, please don't have the dog walk on the lawn, please curb the dog. And what that means is, if your dog has to do his business, then please don't go on people's lawns. You know, it, it was kind of interesting, after hearing all these complaints, I happened to be in my front yard, and somebody came by with their dog, and like, right in front of me, and I was like, you know, I was, I was nice. I said, "You know, people here in the village try to keep their lawns nice, they work very hard, they, you know, and, and, you know, could you just, in the future, please do not have your dog go on somebody's lawn?" And I know it sounds like a crazy public service announcement, and I really don't think I even need to say that, but obviously, I do, because people continue to do that. So, please, let's, let's be considerate of our neighbors, and, so that we all can get along and have a good summer together. The only other thing I have to say is, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. Let's start with Nick tonight, Trustee Zachary.
Wow, that's a first.
Such an honor, such an honor.
I have a, just a few things to, that I wanna mention. We had, in the past, reached out to this group that runs farmer's markets. They had three or four markets going on in the area, and at the time, they didn't think it was good to put another one in competition, because I, I pitched that pavilion space in the past. So, it turns out right now, this group called Down-to-Earth Markets is only running one market in the area, and, and I spoke to somebody who I will be meeting with this Wednesday to show them the pavilion, and then at the next workshop, I'll come back with what we find. You know, it's, there is, there are aspects to this that, they have all the contacts with all the farm people, and they handle a lot of it, but there is... with all the farm people, and they handle a lot of it, but there is, there is some expense and basic supplies, I guess that means garbage bags and whatever incidental things, but also, they said that, you know, that, they talked about getting support and sponsorship from groups that might sponsor having a band play there while the farmers' market's going on. You know, you often go to a market, and there'll be somebody playing music. So there might be expenses, there might be ways we can get sponsorship to alleviate those expenses. So whatever I could find out, I will bring back to the next workshop.
All right, good. That would be nice at the pavilion.
Yeah, the mayor asked me recently to re-explore that, and I was able to contact this person, so I'll let you know at the next workshop where that stands. I was hoping, at the next workshop, we could also discuss a couple of things that I brought up at the last workshop, as a, just, I had suggested that we do a complete survey of multifamily homes, and we could start by having somebody in the office develop that list, so I'd like to follow up on that at the next workshop. And one other thing is, I'd like to know if we can, I had a resident ask me about the survey results. We did a survey, and that survey, that was, that infamous survey with, that we were not, it was not worded very well, but people have asked to see results of the survey, so maybe at the next workshop, we could discuss what, if we might want to tabulate those basic survey results and send them out to people, or make it, or put it on the website or something for, so people have access to it.
Well, I know you had gone over those a couple of times.
I did summarize it and encapsulate it, but we never, we never distributed that information back to the public. And I, people have mentioned that before, because, you know, but somebody asked me about it this week. It's, basically, you did a survey, well, what are the results? If they didn't happen to watch the few meetings where it was discussed, you know, it's very exciting television, but we know that not that many people watch the meetings. So, so those are more or less things that I'd like to follow up with at the next workshop. That's all I really want to report on tonight.
All right, good. Thank you. Trustee Pasquale.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I'd also like to wish everybody a Happy Father's Day, and also some congratulations to our BV Elementary School and our Blue Mountain Middle School on their moving up ceremonies this week, and also congrats to our Hen Hut High School graduating class, you know, all the eager young minds of the future. But I want to just make that acknowledgement. Also, I have the police calls since our last board meetings that I'd like to go over. Thursday, May third, at ten a.m., Officer Farrell arrested a forty-three-year-old for plank man, wanted on two warrants from Buchanan Village Court. Tuesday, May eighth, at four forty p.m., Officer Locher responds to Albany Post Road for a report of an emotionally disturbed man. Officer Locher was able to calm the man down, and he was transported to the hospital by ambulance. Wednesday, May ninth, at eight forty-five p.m., Officer Buddy stops a car for multiple driving infractions. Upon investigation, Officer Buddy determines that the eighteen-year-old male driver from Peekskill has several suspensions of his driver's license, and he's arrested by Officer Buddy. Monday, May fourteenth, at two fifty-five a.m., Officer Palmetto responds to Westchester Avenue residents on a nine-one-one call for a fire. Officer Palmetto observes smoke in the house. He entered the house and assisted the residents in getting out. The fire department arrived shortly thereafter and determined a faulty space heater was the cause of the problem. That could have been some disaster. Monday, May eleventh, eleven fifty p.m., Officer Palmetto responds to a medical aid call for a man having difficulty breathing. Officer Palmetto immediately places the victim on oxygen. The ambulance arrives shortly thereafter and transports the victim to the hospital. The next day, the victim responds to Village Hall and informs the police chief and village administrator that he believes that Officer Palmetto's quick response in placing him on oxygen saved his life. Thursday, May seventeenth, eight-thirty in the morning, two Westchester County probation officers attempted to serve a warrant for petty theft on an eighteen-year-old male staying in a house on Henry Street. The male jumped out of a window and ran away. Probation officers then notified Buchanan County and State Police. Officer Palmetto and Chief Tubbs assisted in the search until it was called off at approximately twelve-thirty p.m. The subject eventually turned himself into Peekskill Police later that day. May twentieth, at twelve fifty, a Dunhill Court resident calls police about a coyote in his front yard. Officer Farrell responds and is able to frighten the coyote away from the area. Note, New York State conservation law prohibits killing the coyote in this type of situation. Friday, June first, Officer Farrell responds to a call for a Henry Street woman having difficulty breathing. He aids her and administers oxygen until she is transported to the hospital by ambulance. Just bear with me just. Sunday, June third, at one fifty p.m., while doing vehicle and traffic enforcement, Officer Buddy stops a car for speeding. Through investigation, Officer Buddy finds that the driver's transporting a large amount of crack cocaine and places him under arrest for felony possession. I can't tell you how difficult car stops, those are the scariest things that police officers do, and family disputes, and to pull a car stop with felony possession of heroin by yourself, you know, good work, Officer Buddy. And this one is bittersweet. Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, at four p.m., after twenty-seven years with the Village of Buchanan and thirty-two years total, Sergeant Mike Guida completes his final shift and retires from the Village of Buchanan Police Department. Just a little thing about Mike, and I affectionately call him Hairbag, and people that, that are familiar with police jargon knows what that means, but I don't know if anybody really knew this, but Mike originally started with the NYPD. He had actually gone through the police academy six months before I did. And out of thirty-five thousand cops, we always come across somebody wherever, be it on a detail or a training, anywhere, where you run into somebody, you become friends immediately, and that lasts. And I just know somewhere, had he stayed with the NYPD, our cross would have passed, and we would have been friends. But anyway, I wish him all the best of luck, and he's going to, he's really going to be missed.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
The coyote, I just want to mention, we had something up on Facebook or somewhere from the, I believe it was the DEC, there was some, if we could repost that, because they're, they're pretty active right now, coyotes. Okay, trustee Funchen.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Father's Day to everybody. And I was, I was, attended the Town of Cortland Memorial Day Tribute. It was very good, other speakers. Unfortunately, I think this time, some of the speakers got a little too political, which was the first time in my experience of having that happen, and it was, I don't think it was the place for it. But it was, it was a nice ceremony, but I think there was always, always confused. Memorial Day is not really for veterans, it's for the people who died. And also, which seems to always be forgotten, it's for the families of those who died. And everybody thinks of where they're going to go for a barbecue for Memorial Day weekend, and there's too many families in this country who are having Memorial Day barbecues, and there's a missing seat. So I think that should be emphasized a lot more. We have a separate day for, for the veterans, for Veterans Day. So we really need to probably emphasize that more, and I just, some of the things I spoke about, because it was kind of our time, was the Vietnam War, and some statistics that were really, really grab you by the throat. There was over nineteen hundred men killed on their last day in Vietnam, and there was over nine hundred killed on their first day in Vietnam. So you think, you think about yourself, but for the grace of God go I. And so, but it was a nice ceremony, and the usual thing. So it was enjoyable, and it was great to represent Buchanan. I'd also like to wish Mike a lot of luck, and he was a great, is a great officer, still is, and he really is a great addition to Buchanan. And as Cheech was a police officer with a test to, it never hurts, it probably helps a lot when an officer of the law has a sense of humor.
Absolutely.
It takes, you know, most people don't realize it, it takes a lot out of very tense situations that an officer can use humor towards doing his job. I, one question that has come up, I want to wish everybody a happy July fourth, but are we having a meeting before July fourth, or are we going to have it after July fourth?
Oh, it would be July third.
Yeah, I think we said that.
I don't know, you know, it's fine with me, but I don't know if anybody else's plans would be going.
I'm here, I'm in the Peekskill.
No? Okay, all right, so happy July fourth, everybody.
Everybody's good, everybody's going to be around. Okay, good. We'll have it on the third, that's fine.
And that's about it. Thanks, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jackson.
Yes, to echo my friend Richard's comment about Memorial Day. Freedom is not free, never has been, and probably never will be. There are men and women who gave the ultimate for the freedoms that we enjoy today. So we should always keep in mind that indeed, our freedoms are precious. My best to the sergeant. He's gone, but not forgotten, not by a long stretch. So we wish him well, and thank him for his service to the village and all that he brought with the job, as has been said, his personality, his humor, and his jolliness. Our police department does a great job. I was coming home last night, two o'clock in the morning, and there was one of our patrol cars out on the street. We can't put a price on their service and their dedication to this village, and want to make that perfectly clear as we go through these, these times, that, that is so important to our quality of life, and we thank them all for their service and their dedication and their awareness for the village. I mentioned before, we're going to do a time capsule project in October, so we're going to be getting stuff from the police department, and the fire department, and the seniors, and the kids over at BV, and our veterans groups, the American Legion in particular, to put those items into the time capsule. And of course, we will be calling upon citizens who might want to get involved, but also leave some tidbit for the time capsule, which will be somewhere on the village grounds. But it's a great project, and I just wish, in twenty-five to thirty years, I see it open, but we don't know.
We'll all be here.
We don't know.
Maybe not on the board, but we'll all be around.
But again, to all the dads, Happy Father's Day, and thank you so much.
The time capsule, how, do you know the dimensions, how big those are?
Well, we have a, it depends on how much you want to spend.
Oh, okay.
So, but within our historical budget, and then we may do a little fundraising also, we should get probably the biggest size that's available, which is somewhere around eighteen-hundred to twenty-one hundred bucks. But they come with a whole range of sizes, and help you with the, the marketing of it, and to make it a really community event, which is what we're trying to do.
Because we have some stuff from the ninetieth anniversary, like the mug and different things we could put in there, too.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
From the seventy-fifth anniversary.
Yeah, all that, yeah, definitely. Got a lot of, a lot of stuff in the vault.
And I'll see you guys on Saturday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the floor? No? Okay. All right. I am, first, I just want to say one thing. Mike Guida, wherever you are, we hope you're enjoying your retirement. I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session. We need to discuss some personnel issues. And Stephanie, was there any other issues that you wanted to bring up other than?
Contract issue.
And contract issues, okay. Okay, on a motion?
Tell them move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great Buchanan day.